Another moment. Thank you for joining us, everyone will be with you in just another moment. Okay, good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us, our second town hall meeting. Firstly, we had such a great feedback from the, just the communication through live broadcasts, that it's so much more warmer for us to be able to communicate the things that are going on in Yeshiva without emails, and we're bombarded with that. So we'll take a few minutes just to share with you the information. We have our team behind us, Rabbi Bauman, Dr. Bennett, all of our principals, Manalim are, cannot be seen, but they're certainly part of the preparation. We're not expecting any earth-shattering information tonight. So we just want to share with you where things are, sort of a state of the union, where things are. We've gotten tremendous amount of feedback from our parents and from the people within the school, staff. And I just thought it was appropriate to start with a short Torah, just for a moment. The end of Parshus Kisavom, Moshe Rabbeinu says, the possek says, "Lo nos an Hashem, l'chem leiv la'das, ve'nayim l'eros, vez nayim le'shmoa, aray y'maze." Moshe Rabbeinu testifies about Bnei Yisrael that today, something happened. I see that you're totally committed today to embrace Hashem, le'shmoa, to hear and to see, and you are fully committed. This is what Moshe Rabbeinu says. Rashi says something quite unusual, that he heard, Rashi says, he heard what happened in this day. The possek says that Moshe gave a Sefer Torah, the first Ahnose Sefer Torah. Moshe gave a Sefer Torah to his family, to Bnei Levi. Moshe was a Levi, and he gave it to Bnei Levi. And Kli Yisrael came to him with a little bit of a taina, protest, saying that, you know, you gave it to your family, what's going to happen one day? It's going to be said that the Torah was given only to Shevot Levi. And we were there also at Harsini, and we also accepted the Torah. And it belongs to all of Kli Yisrael. And Moshe Rabbeinu, this is a great lesson for any leader. You think they got insulted, that somebody attacked him, that he did the wrong thing. Moshe was thrilled, and this is the possek that he said, "Now I see you're fully committed." And Rosh Hashiva said, "You see from here, when you start worrying about the Torah of the next generation, you worry about the Torah that the children and the lessons that they're learning, that they can give it over to their children. When you reach that level of commitment, then you know you're fully committed." And Rosh Hashiva explained that Moshe Rabbeinu, when he saw that, and Kli Yisrael had been learning in the Midbar 40 years, they were learning day and night. That's all they did, was le'shmoa de rey Hashem, they were doing Torah mitzvahs. That's all they were doing for 40 years in the Midbar. What could have been left unspoken? What did Moshe Rabbeinu still need to see in Kli Yisrael to know that they're fully committed? They're learning day and night. Yet we see that there was still one component. When you're worried about the next generation, what's going to happen to them, then you're fully committed. I thought there was an appropriate point to start this evening's message with, because, you know, there have been a lot of passionate opinions. And I have to, you know, say, it's quite impressive, because what are people really concerned about? We haven't had Yeshiva since middle of March. People are concerned, what is my child, the parents, what is my child going to learn? What's the takeaway? Are there stresses? Are they going to come away with lessons that are inappropriate? We want them to see the love of Torah. How will they develop that if they're not able to learn, they're not able to connect with their rebaimin teachers? And the staff, it is just not believable what the staff, before I get to the teachers and rebaimin and morus, what the staff, the support staff of our Yeshiva has done in their commitment to be able to provide for all scenarios. It was quite an ambitious task to set us up for whatever the scenarios. There are children or families that were compromised and could not come to school. Some children could come to school, and they set things up that we can cover every base, every permutation, and every scenario. And the last time we met, the monies that were not spared, no penny, no dollar was spared to put in the proper technology. I myself am giving shier this year, so there's a, I have three screens in my room. One in the front, one in the back, computer on my desk. Depending on who's talking, will depend on which microphone or which speaker has to be adjusted. Rabbi Hashem might teach 12th grade, I take a 12th grader, I put him in charge of the technology. I can basically do talking, if I have to use the smart board as another gabbay. But it isn't that way for much of the grades. They all should be, have 12th graders one day, but in many of the younger grades and up, it has been quite a challenge. And as much as the learning has been the greatest kiddush Hashem of learning I have ever witnessed, I'm in the Yeshiva a quarter of a century, and the greatest kiddush Hashem I have seen in terms of the learning has been the connection that the morus and rebaimin and the teachers have established with the children in the classroom, out of the classroom. They've really gone, you know, way beyond, past the brink. As a matter of fact, there are some of them are way past the brink. We're catching them and pushing them back up the top of the cliff. That's really something to be said. The successes have been great, fantastic, and we are so proud, parents and principals, just to be able to see the tremendous embrace we have for the children, what they've put up with. And they rallied back and have come and been very understanding of their peers. But especially the teachers, rebaimin and morus, it's really been something, something. But there have been challenges also, since we last broadcast, there have been some challenges. And, you know, I think it's important to be able to understand what those challenges are. Not in detail, first of all, I probably couldn't intelligently give over accurately all of the challenges, but just my understanding of the challenges, there have been some technology challenges, because the right technology, I don't know, it's not perfect for every age group. So we've been adjusting that and getting up to snuff on that. There's been a learning curve for all of the rebaimin, morus, and teachers to, it's absolutely entirely a new platform to do, there's always been blended learning, but to teach both at the same time, that's been something that is really unprecedented. It's experimental and not simple at all, and that's been a challenge. And the hybrid learning, this hybrid learning is not so simple. You know, every time there's a distant learner in the classroom, you know, it's like, I can't get, I tried all day to think of the right mushel to be able to give over, to share with everyone, but it's really, you know, trying to teach, riding a unicycle and play tennis and serve and throw football at the same time and juggle while you're going and teach the class. Sometimes it feels like that for the rebaimin, the teachers. That's been quite a challenge also, to be able to deal with that. So just, many of the parents have questioned, like, you know, okay, so we'll put another students going on distant learning. We've had situations, and okay, someone's going, has to be quarantined, whatever, just put another student on to the distant learning. And we take a deep breath, because, you know, nobody wants to push that teacher over. And it was hard at the beginning for us to understand, it was just one more student. And sure, if you're teaching 12th grade like I am, you know, it's one scenario. But the teachers who really perseverate over every child, the teachers, morus, rebaimin, they will not allow a child to be under their care and just coast. It's untenable, and they worry about it. And then the communication from parents to the teachers, and they're at their, and they're, they have to now spend the nights putting things on, posting it, so that the distant learners can get it. It's a whole new world for them, and that's been a challenge to keep everyone in their game. So where the principals have had their hands full, the principals really have tried to massage everything and keep a balance, and we're constantly trying to upgrade what we can offer everyone. I know there's been a very big challenge in terms of getting tested. I know that's been a frustration to many parents, and Dr. Bennett's here with us. And Dr. Bennett, what can I say to you? Thank you very much, and he'll address some of those. But we are aware, you've shared with us, and the parents have been, you've been extremely, extremely forthright to report what your frustrations are. And if anything I learned from the Torah I said tonight is that I'm only impressed by the parents who are sharing it. They try to make it better for their children, and believe me, we're very touched by it. We want to be able to help. Ultimately, we're being guided by the principles that were set out by the last broadcast, which is, we want to open, but we want to stay open, and there are some chumras. They aren't made really to cause anyone frustration or difficulty, or just, you know, why are you being like that? It's really just because we want to open, but we want to stay open. Hashem, we've had tremendous seiat de shmeir, that the, I think 99% of all of the quarantines that had to go in place were all, you know, precautionary. And we have been blessed that we're not dealing with really close downs and people, you know, testing positive. So I guess the precautions have been helping, you know, like the old adage, like, who says worrying doesn't help? All the things I worry about don't happen. So, you know, we need to be able to assent, and there are things that can be adjusted, as hopefully where at the, turning the corner, is the expression being used. If we are turning the corner, hopefully things will become easier. We're in the right place, we're at the end, hopefully, of this challenge. And I know there's been a challenge with the 24-hour policy. You know, I'm a little bit of a layperson on this, dealing with a second grader, or a third grader, or a fourth grader on this, but nevertheless, I'm hearing it all from the teachers and the morus and the rebaimin. You know, my child got a sore throat, I was kind enough to share it with the school, and now I can't come to school, and his siblings can't to school, and I can't go to work. And that's, you know, got to be terribly frustrating, and we don't accept rapid tests. And Dr. Bennett's going to have his hands full in a few minutes to address all that in terms of why. But we are quite aware, what's not doable is to have a child come into the class and has no materials. For children, in my cheer, they need a gomor above a comma with the rush and the riff in the back, and they're good to go, they have the materials. But for a second grader, a third grader, a fourth grader, they need their workbooks. The workbooks are in school. They need all the material, whatever the teachers can load up onto global classroom, fine, you know, it's there. But there's so much more, in terms of their kriya workbooks and handwriting workbooks. And for them to be an activity, they can't do it. It's mora mora, teacher, I can't follow what's happening. And so I know that's been a frustration, you know, nobody wants to miss one day of school. And certainly when, there's nothing wrong with them, it's just because of a sibling, there's nothing wrong with them. I'm telling my, told my doctor, there's nothing wrong. And my doctor said, there's nothing wrong, but the school policy allows it. You know, I know that's a frustration, we're aware, and I'm hoping we're at the end of it, but we feel terrible that there is that frustration, but we're going to try and work together. The one major, I guess this call announcement, there's been a tremendous amount of conversation and dialogue about what's going to be after Sukkot. You know, certainly when we started, we thought after Sukkot would be like zmanam ha'shiach, and COVID would be long, long gone. And, you know, now that we're almost by yom tef, it's a reality, a decision that has to be made. And after much conversation and consultation with astora and medical, and the Yeshiva's continuing their calendar, the regular calendar of opening up, when we're scheduled to open up after Sukkot. But that doesn't mean that there aren't concerns, there are concerns. Dr. Bennett will discuss many of them and how we can avoid them. The way we see it is that we're in this together. You know, this is not a police state, we don't want to create that. We've had unusual, for the size of Yeshiva we have, we have unusually close relationship with our parents, with our teachers, rebaimin, we're a family. And when you're a family, we all have to do what's safe, the entire family. My married children aren't coming, because, you know, they have family they have to go back to. Some of them are compromised, and they can't come. They can't come, as much as we're yearning to see them, they can't come. And I'm sure many of you, or maybe all of you, are in the same situation. We're together, whatever's safe for our entire family is what we're going to have to practice. And there are going to be recommendations, we're not imposing bans and things like that. But this, I guess worse than the bans, because a ban, you could always get around. You know, you're flying to Newark, I know there are bans, there are ways to get around bans. This is sometimes worse, it's our, we have to do this together as a family. So whatever those recommendations are, we want to open after Sukkot, and we need to stay open. In Bezer Shem, we want to stay open, maybe there's a vaccine around the corner. But if not, we want to be open, we want to stay safe, we want to have a beautiful yom tef. There may be certain restrictions that we're going to have to impose on ourselves, because it's just not safe, you know, if there's, you know, dancing. And I know many of the New York, we have reports coming in from hasanas. I myself, I'm not suggesting right or wrong, but we have to do safe practices. And those people who are unable to keep to that, okay, they'll self-quarantine. That was a better, they'll have to self-quarantine, they weren't able to do it. That seemed like a wiser choice than to close down school for the first week to 10 days and, you know, send everyone into really something that we didn't want to do. Our Torah has to continue to be taught, and the few people who are in situations where they're unable to stay, you know, safe, okay, they'll self-quarantine and keep us all safe. And those are, you know, the points that I wanted to mention. And then thank everyone from the bottom of our hearts, on behalf of all the Rosh Hashivas, from Anamin, Rav Luben, and I guess this opportunity to thank our board of directors and executive board, who are, you know, who stay behind the scenes, but have been tremendously involved in supporting, giving us, you know, advice and being in the trenches to help support the decisions that the Yeshiva's making. And we're there for you, you know, we're there for anything that's frustrating you. You know, remind me of the Torah, that I'm going to be very only thankful and say, wow, I'm even more impressed that you care so much about the Torah, the future generation, that generally how we try to receive whatever frustrations you have, and we hope you feel the same from us. If we have to come to you with a frustration, we're only trying to protect and preserve the Torah. This is our next generation, and, you know, we're very fortunate going into Rosh Hashanah. I feel very good that we are, we're doing everything we can to keep the Torah flame burning. And on that note, I'd like to give the microphone over to Rabbi Bauman, followed by Dr. Bennett. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rabbi Palgan. Good evening, everyone. Wanted to make it clear that what I'm going to say is, on behalf of my colleagues, principals of the other divisions, Bex, and our NS, and ECE, and my colleagues in KES. And I'm also going to, what I'm really going to be saying is, pretty much filling in details of what Rabbi Palgan touched upon, and hopefully incorporating answers to many of the questions that have been previously submitted prior to the session this evening. And I just also want to mention, as Rabbi Palgan did, that we could not have gotten to this stage without the work of the support staff, that's IT, and the other administrators, the office staff in each of the divisions, everyone has really risen to the occasion and really gone above and beyond, and it's really been a team effort as we chart these uncharted waters. I do want to mention the Messirus Neffish, and the cooperation and the integrity of the parents. It's been a real source of strength of chizuk to us these first few weeks, especially as situations unfolded that, you know, unexpected, unanticipated, and it's been very difficult. And Rabbi Palgan mentioned, and many of you are well aware, that we have a high bar set to keep everybody safe, the responsibility that the Rosh Hashiva and the board and the principals have undertaken to bring 1,200 people back to the school at a time that many others are fearful to do so, is a tremendous responsibility. And that's really the source for why we're taking such precautions on the medical end. And we appreciate the fact that, as hard as it is, parents are sticking with it and are being forthcoming and being able to keep everybody, keep everybody safe. The dedication and the incredible Messirus Neffish of our teachers is really awe-inspiring. They did not sign up for this. The art and the science of being an educator does not involve many of the things that they're now occupying themselves with. But the dedication to the children and to their future is something that keeps them all going. And it's really, it's really just been, to witness it has really been something that's just, it's very inspiring. And I hope that the teachers themselves appreciate that what they're doing, keeping the learning going, is something that will really be a source of eternal reward for them. In the six weeks since our previous town hall meeting, so we've enjoyed the fruits of our labor by reopening school. We're now coming to grips with the real challenges, both of being a parent, sending a child to school in the COVID environment, and a teacher attempting to teach two groups of students, one in front of them and one virtually. Because the school has moved beyond the tried and true model of relating to and educating the child in front of the teacher, now includes distance learning and a daily and hourly focus on health and safety. So I'm going to focus my remarks on those two areas. It's namely, when your child feels ill, what measures are in place for safety? And two, what happens to education? So I want to start on the educational end. I have to say that we need to take a step back, and I think we need to lower the expectations that we, with great optimism, presented six weeks ago. The hybrid model, not only for us, but seems across the country, across the globe, is turning into a bigger struggle than anticipated. It's not so aligned with great pedagogy, and there are shortcomings. And I think we have to lower expectations for what it can actually provide for the children who are not sitting in the classroom directly in front of the teacher. Students learn best in person. Teachers are trained, and that's where their experience lies, in that model. Relationships between teachers and children flourish in person. And the teacher's ability to monitor and adjust instruction, and to be flexible, and to recognize when a child might have needs for further explanation, repetition of something, or ready, they're ready to move on, all of those things happen so much more smoothly and effortlessly in the classroom when it's in person. An effective teacher conducts a classroom much like an orchestra conductor conducts an orchestra. Imagine if the orchestra, a part of the orchestra was on a screen in front of the conductor. Perhaps to the layperson, who's still hearing music, however, to the virtuoso, the entire experience is one of frustration. He cannot achieve the excellent results that he is accustomed to. This is experience, this is being experienced daily by many of our teachers. So I'll say to those of you who have chosen to keep children home out of general precaution, if you want to see how things go, you're just a little bit fearful, I'm going to ask you to keep this in mind, because the distance learning is not an alternative to choose lightly. Those of you who have real medical concerns in the family, and therefore keeping the children home, so rest assured that we are continuing to tweak the system. We are continuing to train the teachers to be more effective, and we're upgrading the technology and exploring new models in order to be able to effectively educate your children. We remain committed to do that. It's a bigger challenge than we anticipated, and it's a process, but we are continuing that process. And to those of you who need to quarantine because of symptoms of illness suddenly arose, or there was an exposure to someone with COVID. So for you, we ask, from you, we ask for patience, and we understand the frustration when there's no immediate ability to put the children on to Zoom. We'll discuss that as we go forward. How long does it take to get a child to be put on to Zoom? That's the big question. So it's a process, and everyone needs to know that we have to go through this process. Our process has been refined over the past few weeks, after we set it up initially, and this is the process. If you have any COVID-related issue, suspicion, childhood symptoms, suspected exposure, so please email safety@YTCTE.org. That is the portal, that is the door to begin to be able to interface with the school with whatever procedures need to follow. Okay, so we have a COVID coordinator. She is on campus from approximately eight to two daily. And then she is again working on issues from approximately eight to 10 in the evenings. Okay, so the way it works is that information, she takes the information, and then she forwards it to the different divisions, has all the details, the name of the child who's going to be out, the class that they are in, the approximate time that the quarantine will have to last. And that has to be done for each sibling in the family. And it goes across different divisions, it's an arduous process and very time-consuming. After that, the information is channeled into our DL support team, and then begin the process of informing the teachers, the child is out. They investigate whether there's, whatever systems might need to be put into place. Now, in most of our divisions, we've been able to streamline the process. If you're a student in high school, and you contact DL support, and the division is notified, so then you can usually be able to access the lessons that are taking place through Zoom, and they, you know, in the morning, in a relative short amount of time. The same is true in the middle school. Once the division has been notified, they are able to, in a relatively short amount of time, within a couple hours or less, able to get the child on to Zoom. And now, in the early childhood, the way things have been restructured with the distance learning, it will also be a matter of a couple of hours. The challenges remain in the elementary school. We have set up a new model for first and second grade, so that those grades also were able to, in a relatively short amount of time, be able to put children on to Zoom. We're still working in grades three, four, and five. And right now, the process and the protocols are as follows. If we become aware of a situation of safety at YTCTE... at YTCTE.org is notified by 2:00 PM on a, on a, any given weekday, school day, then we're able to process the requests and to inform the teachers and to make preparations. And then the child will, you'll get the Zoom information in time for class the next morning. Anytime of the school day that a child is sent home by the school because they have taken ill, or we've gotten information about, about some possible exposure. So then we're also able to provide the opportunity for the child to go onto Zoom beginning of the next morning. However, if it, the information arrives at, at safety after, after school hours, afternoon, the evening, certainly the, the early the next morning. We are not able to get, at this point, get you into the, into the regular class through Zoom. So many, so many reasons to go into, but the complexity, the size of the, of the elementary school, the number of things that have to be put into place. At this point, we can't reliably and reasonably assure that that can happen. So the information comes in after the end of the school day or after 2:00 PM, or after the end of the school day for a child who, okay, let me just make that clear. It's basically if you inform the school after 2:00 PM, we can't guarantee it. If the child is in school, so at any time that they're in school, and then the school is the one that, that initiates the, the quarantine, then we can, we can take care of it till the next morning. We are working on setting up a some kind of a webpage that would provide more generic educational materials so that even on the first day that the child is out, you would be able to access some, some educational material to, to be able to keep them engaged in, in meaningful, meaningful academics. That will still be a few days away until we actually have it up and running for all of the, for all of the grades. Okay. Just a word to the, to those who are on distance learning on an indefinite basis. It is very critical that you have a working printer at home. Working on getting Google Classroom set up, which will provide the an easy opportunity and an easy method of getting materials to home, but it will require in many cases that the things need to be printed. I know it's going on already. It's expanding to more and more classes. So if you're at home, it's not realistic to have materials be able to be delivered so, or even picked up. So frequently, the best thing is to have a working printer, working printer at home. I do need to emphasize that Zoom is provided only for COVID related issues. If you're planning on leaving early for yantum vacation, or if you're going to a family simcha, so the Zoom opportunities are not being provided. This is something that only came about because of COVID. And with its limited effectiveness, we, we want to keep it to COVID related issues. We have always been able to, with proper requests or timely requests from the parents, be able to prepare materials for you so that you have some, some, some worksheets, some, some indication of what the class will be doing while your child is away. And that we will still be able to, to provide you, but please do not request the Zoom information if it is not a COVID related issue. I do want to clarify that if your family is going into a voluntary quarantine because you are going to visit family members, or family members are coming to you who you are afraid could be, could be put at risk by being in, in contact with your children. So we do consider that a COVID related issue. And if you contact safety and YTCTE.org with the details of your situation, we will be able to provide the Zoom information for you. Okay. On the education issues, any education issues, any questions? So we spoke first about the health and safety. Email of safety@YTCTE.org. That's for all COVID health and safety issues. For any educational issues, such as Zoom, or questions about materials, questions about scheduling, or difficulties with technology. So we have a separate email for that. That is DL Support Distance Learning, dl-support@YTCTE.org. And we ask you, we beg you, do not contact the teachers directly. Don't even contact the division office directly. If you have an issue, please email dl-support@YTCTE.org. And it is monitored, the, the questions and the requests then get forwarded to the proper division or to the proper IT person or to the proper educational technology person. And they will be able to, to handle the requests and the answer the questions in a timely manner. But there's nothing more frustrating or stressful to a teacher who's involved in trying to reach the students and teach and to do what they do best, to then feel that they're falling short because they're unable to, to immediately respond to a parental request. We have, we have the team in place. It's, it's, it's getting stronger every day. So please, dl-support@YTCTE.org is the address to go to if you have any issue with the, the educational side of COVID related issues. So again, just to review and make it very clear that if you have any COVID health issues, any questions or any issues, that goes to safety@YTCTE.org. If you have any educational issues related to COVID, please contact dl-support@YTCTE.org. Okay, I'd like to move on now to the safety issues. We spoke about the educational issues. I'd like to just go over some of the safety issues again, and I'll just state them, and Dr. Bennett will be able to provide more, more depth and, and a greater understanding of why we're doing what we're doing. Masks remain a critical component of our ability to, to stay open. And I have to say that the mask wearing amongst the children has been strong. It's been a challenge. It's very hard, especially in the heat. But they have been doing a good job, and it's obvious that you, the parents, are encouraging them. You're making sure that they have their masks. You're making sure that they have an extra mask. And for that, we're very grateful. Just stating that it's a, it's a rule that we have in school. We hope that it becomes second nature as long as it's necessary. And it's, 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 but it's absolutely critical that, that the children understand from the parents, from the teachers, from the school, that mask wearing is just, that's just a part of life now, and there's nothing to discuss. It's something that we must continue to do, certainly while they're in school amongst other people. Okay, just to go through, I'm not, I'm not going to go through the symptoms. But again, the reasons why you would need to contact safety at YTCTE.org would be to report that the child has symptoms. Symptoms do not include a runny nose. They do include a sore throat. How to describe and define when a four-year-old says their throat hurts? I don't know the answer. I don't know that anybody knows the answer without a doctor examining what that means. But again, we are being very precautious. So if your child's, your children, any child is showing any kind of symptom or even any family member. So that is a reason to inform the school, keep all the children home. And you will be, once you've informed safety at YTCTE, you will get all the information in an automatic reply, which will tell you what you need to do. And you have to go for the child who has the symptoms, has to go to be tested. And you have to stay at home. Children have to stay at home until you get a negative result. Hopefully you'll get a negative result. At which point, the process is to then fill out the form that you got from safety at YTCTE with the information, with a copy of the negative test. And then you'll be informed when the children are cleared to, to return to school. And that is a whole process. On our end, again, with teachers have to be informed, the children are coming back. But we don't need to, once we have the negative results and we have it in writing, we're able to then process that very quickly, and the children can come back that, that same day. When it comes to the, the testing, it has to be a PCR test. Dr. Bennett will explain why it needs to be a PCR test. This is a, one of our precautions. We're not, we don't invoke universal testing when I'm making everybody test every week or after yantum, or, but when there's any question at all, we need a test, and the most reliable test is the PCR test. There are a number of places that offer it. It's, there is a wait. It's not instant. It's not rapid. And that's the source I know of a lot of frustration and difficulty, but this is, this is something that what we have in place for right now, we're constantly looking for places that can do it, you know, with a quicker, a speedier turnaround time. But whatever, whenever the test is, it must be a PCR test. And that's something that has to be reiterated, and please do not make the mistake of going to get a rapid test. As Dr. Bennett will tell you, that when you get a positive on a rapid test, that's considered to be authoritative and accurate. So if you get a positive, you're in trouble because you got a positive. And if you get a negative, it's not authoritative, and it won't be relied upon. And you'd have to go back and get a PCR test. So it is not, it's, it's not a wise idea to get anything other than the PCR test. And on the, on the form, you will see some places that you can, that you can go to, that list is constantly changing, is find out places that are available and or somebody has not such a great experience, one of the places on the list, and we will remove them from the list. But that, that's the best information that we have. Okay, just to talk about what happens when there's illness in school. And illness in school, if a child is complaining or they appear to not being, not being, feeling so well. So we have a, a waiting room where the children are taken to. You'll be called and be asked to take them home. I do want to point out that as we move along in this process, and we're getting a little more experience, and we have it a little bit more as, I wouldn't say routine, but we have it, we have more of a system going. We are focusing on the impact on the children themselves. We don't, we don't want it to be a frightening experience. We are preparing a, a flowchart, which I don't have with me, but it'll be a flowchart that the children can understand of what's happening and what, what we're asking of them and in a very non-threatening, non-frightening way, so that they, you know, the worst thing for anybody is to not know what's happening. This will explain it to them in a, in a, you know, in age appropriate manner. Our school counselors are going to be going around to the classes to discuss with the children what happens if, you know, you're asked to, you know, to go into the waiting room. We're not calling it a quarantine room. It's a scary word. Ask them to go into the waiting room. And we're, we're looking out for the children, the children in, in that way. Okay, just to speak about the, the, Rabbi Palgan mentioned about what we're asking after Sukkot. So we're not making any, any requirements. There's no, there's no hard and fast rules. But we are very, very concerned that exposure in, in uncontrolled situations, which could be a wedding without where people are not wearing masks reliably, which could be, you know, if you go to a wedding 6,000 miles away and be exposed to a crowd that where they're not protecting themselves, or you could go across the street to a shul where they're having Hakavos and Simchat Torah, and it's not properly controlled, or people are doing things on their own, and they're dancing, and they're sweating, and they're holding hands, and they're in very close proximity. Either one of those exposures places a tremendous risk and, and danger to everyone. If the children will then come back to school, you know, the, you know, a day and a half later, that's something that we're very concerned about. We're going to be having every, every family is going to be asked to sign a new affirmation, as we did at the beginning of the school year, just to let us know that you have not been in any of these situations where you've been exposed or the children have been exposed. It doesn't matter where you've been. We're not concerned about traveling on an airplane because that's controlled. That's not the issue. It's really what you're doing if you're in a situation where you have an exposure. So we're going to ask you to sign that affirmation that you have not been in those kinds of circumstances. And if you have been, we will ask you to, to quarantine for somewhere between seven to 10 days until your children can, can return to school so that we can reopen school immediately after Sukkot. But in a safe, in a safe manner that everyone is protected. So at this point, I am happy to turn it over to Dr. Bennett. I can tell you that there's no one person in our administration who can properly sing Dr. Bennett's praises because he's being bombarded by so many of us with questions. He's always available. He's always calm and clear thinking. He's very consistent in, in his approach. And we really, really appreciate it. We could not have opened, we could not still be open if not for your, your guidance and, and your medical leadership. And we really want to say thank you very much. And I turn it over now to Dr. Bennett.
Thank you for those kind words. Now, I really feel responsible for a lot of people, but I'm here and I accuse of tov to all the leadership at school and the staff and the Mo'ras and the Rambam that are really doing wonders and putting forth Herculean effort to really educate our children. And I'm just very proud to be part of that team. That given, I, you know, I, I have been bombarded with a lot of questions, and I'm happy to answer the best of my ability. There are still a lot of unknowns related to COVID. And it's in, it's a subject that's evolving every day. And I really try to keep up with all the COVID news, mostly from the CDC, but also the Florida Department of Health and different sources that I think are reliable. I know, I know there are other philosophies and other approaches to keeping everyone safe at the different schools. I, I really believe that Taurus Emis Taurus Heim is taking a very safe and a very practical approach. And it, it is all taken from the CDC guidelines. They are pretty black and white. There is some gray zones related to individual, individual cases, which again, each case is, is really a different case. And it has to be investigated to see what all the players are doing and who's been exposed, et cetera. And I think with Rabbi Bauman and the COVID coordinator, we've been working really hard to try to make the best decisions that allow the school to stay safe and to try to affect as, as few people as possible in the process. I can't emphasize enough, like Rabbi Bauman said, related to Sukkot, but just in general, if everyone takes, adheres to the precautions that are recommended of wearing a face mask, which is really the, the primary barrier and the primary protective mechanism we have to try to keep COVID under control. We should do that outside of school. The children do, do pass on the virus, but it's really the, the parents and the people outside of school that are, are maybe not doing or being as, as, as protective as they can outside of school. I got a call today from one of my patients that attends the school that the mom tested positive after being exposed to a friend. And I, I just, I just can't emphasize enough that there are asymptomatic people that have COVID. There are people with minor symptoms that have COVID, and there are people with overt symptoms that have COVID. And you have to stay away from people, and you have to protect yourself from spreading the disease because you from people and you have to protect yourself from spreading the disease because you may be one of those asymptomatic carriers. So it's very important to wear masks. I think I'm supposed to emphasize over, over the Yom Tov and Sukkot especially that everyone really adhere to the mask wearing, especially when you're outside with other people. And try to keep as safe a distance as possible too. That is one of the criteria as far as a direct contact. If you're within fif- within six feet for more than 15 minutes of someone with COVID, you have a high chance of getting COVID and you should really try to keep a safe distance and wear a mask. And certainly if you can't keep a safe distance, then for sure you should be wearing a mask. And I, I believe that if everyone wore a mask and, and practiced safe distancing, we would not probably be where we are right now. There is good news and Florida certainly has, has a decreasing amount of cases every day and hospitalizations. So Florida is heading in the right direction. We still are a high-risk zone. And I think that may change over the next week or two because the cases are down. And that does play into our decision-making as far as being extra cautious who we quarantine and who we don't because of the amount of cases in the, in the community and in South Florida at large. So those all play a role in determining, you know, what the, what the procedure will be on a case-to-case basis. As far as the testing is concerned, I know it's very frustrating. It's frustrating for us also in our, in our practice. As you know, we have a large practice. We are not testing. And unfortunately, there's not a lot of testing sites that do the PCR testing. Again, the RT-PCR, reverse transcriptase PCR testing has a high sensitivity, has the ability to test correctly, test and correctly identify those people that are positive. So if it has 98% sensitivity, that means that if you are, if you do have COVID, we're going to get it right 98% of the time, which is an acceptable amount. The antigen testing, the sensitivity, the FDA puts a, a criteria, makes a criteria for, it has to be at least 80% sensitive. That means that there will be 20% false positives. And a lot of the antigen tests, none of them compared to the PCR testing. And in fact, the CDC recommends in certain cases where people are doing antigen testing. If like the Rabbi, Rabbi Bauman said, if it's positive, you're good. You know it's positive because it has a high specificity. But the sensitivity, if it's, if you have a false negative and you're really positive, then you're exposing a lot of people. And the CDC will recommend PCR testing after these negative antigen tests. So we've chosen to do the PCR testing because it is the most accurate. It's the best we have right now and it's, it's really the best test to keep everyone safe and make sure that we don't miss any positive COVID students or, or parents. So I'm sorry that the testing hasn't evolved any further, that it could be more rapid and, and we can have more accurate testing at our fingertips. But that is in the works. So we have that to look forward to. There, I mean, I'm sure people have read in the news that the vaccines are on the horizon. Latest is that Pfizer hopefully will have a vaccine. They say even by November or December. I don't know if that's a piddle, a political maneuver or not, but I believe that Pfizer is probably going to be the leading candidate in the, in the States at least, as far as getting vaccinations out, which will help reduce the amount of cases and, and also as far as we're concerned, it will help us maybe have some more leniencies as far as how we direct all the procedures and everything else. As far as families and as far as specific cases, I can never emphasize enough that do not send your child to school if they are not feeling well. What if they even don't have any of the COVID symptoms? If they're not feeling well, don't send your child to school because that is a scenario where that child may in the next 24 hours start exhibiting symptoms. And then because he was contagious when he wasn't feeling well, we would have to quarantine, you know, more people in school depending on, on the situation. So if your child's not feeling well or certainly if they have any symptoms besides a runny nose and a cold, they should stay at home at least for a day. The runny nose and a cold, I would keep, if it's the first day of a runny nose and a cold or congestion without any other symptoms, I would still keep them home one day just to make sure it doesn't evolve or progress into other symptoms that are on the list of the COVID list. And after a day, if the child's feeling well and there's no new symptoms, then they can return to school. Otherwise, if you have a symptom that's on the list of COVID symptoms, they should stay home. There's two approaches to quarantining children. There's either the symptomatic approach, which we've used outside of school before school started, which is if basically there's no testing involved, if your child has a symptom, then they automatically quarantine for 10 days. And then all direct contacts, anyone that's been in either in direct physical contact or within six feet for four and 15 minutes is considered a direct contact. They quarantine for 14 days regardless. So that's a symptomatic approach. It's a more stringent approach. It doesn't allow for any leeway like the testing approach. The testing approach does allow us to make real-time decisions and it really is the only way that, only objective way we have to really decide what we need to do in each case. And the PCR testing, like I said before, is the most accurate way of testing. As soon as the child has symptoms, they can be tested. And if negative, they can return to school as soon as they feel well enough. And when they have when they're fever-free for at least 24 hours without fever reducer. But it's, and it's really important to understand, I know people say, I've heard from other schools that, you know, the testing isn't as accurate when you, until you've had symptoms for three or four days. That's, that's not, that's not accurate as far as what I've read. That as soon as you're symptomatic, especially in the first five days, that's when the virus is at the highest level in your body. And it's easy, the easiest, it's a time when it's easiest to detect the virus. So as soon as your child exhibits symptoms or as soon as a parent exhibits symptoms, that is when you should test. If the test is positive, then we, we get into the quarantining of, of the child with symptoms quarantines from 10 days from the start of symptoms. And everyone else quarantines for 14 days if they have, if they've been in direct contact. Now, testing from a direct contact perspective is, is okay. It doesn't help the direct contact. The direct contact quarantines 14 days regardless. But if they test after three or four days and they are negative, that means all the indirect contacts. That means kids in the class, kids that might have been in contact with the direct contact before they had symptoms. Those are all indirect contacts. And if the direct contact test negative after three or four days, all those indirect contacts are free and clear to return to their normal routine. The direct contact still quarantined for 14 days. Because PCR testing, even PCR testing of these direct contacts only tests real time for that day. The reason you quarantine for 14 days is because that is the incubation period for the virus. So you could test negative on day three and test positive on day four of the quarantine. So only, testing only helps the indirect contacts. The direct contacts are stuck for 14 days. So that's why entire families need to quarantine when there is a symptomatic child or sibling in the family that has symptoms. Also, you should know that the quarantine for a direct contact starts as, as the last exposure to the person who's symptomatic or that has tested positive. So that symptomatic child or, or parent needs to quarantine. I mean, a real quarantine, they need to stay in an isolated area and have as little interaction with family members as possible because if you have interactions within the 10 days, if you have an interaction on the ninth day with that symptomatic child, you start your quarantine from that ninth day. So theoretically, you could have 24 days of quarantine if you're in contact with the symptomatic person up to day 10. So it's important. I know it's stringent and I know it's frustrating. I had to do it myself, you know, a few months ago when I had COVID and I was quarantined in my own room. And I was, it was nice because I was served meals and I felt like a king for once. But it's still, it's, it's a hardship and it's important that you understand that it's important when, you know, when we say quarantine, that really does mean to quarantine. And there are some cases where you could be a little lenient depending on the situation, but for the most part, you know, those are the rules that we're following at this point. Rabbi Bauman, was there anything else you wanted me to touch on?
Do you see the questions over there?
I would think, Dr. Bennett, if you could just make some mention of the Sukkot activities, people, you know, we haven't specifically, what are you most concerned about? Travel? Dancing? Comment about that?
Okay, the, the most, I mean, really the most important thing, exposure is, is the catchword. So exposure to really anybody that, that may have COVID and those, that's a wide range of people because like I said before, there are asymptomatic people that have COVID. And as far, I saw some questions about, you know, people traveling to New York and New Jersey. New York and New Jersey, whether they're not testing or not, I'm not sure, but the case, the cases are really down in New York and New Jersey. And it's a relatively safe place to be. That doesn't mean you don't protect yourself and your, your family from getting COVID by wearing masks and keeping a safe distance. But traveling is not so much of an issue as far as airplanes. Airplanes are safe. The airports are, are a little more tricky as far as some airports don't require masks, most do. But I would always wear a mask and keep a safe distance when you're in the airport. Flying is not an issue. It's where you're, wherever you're landing is really the issue. And, you know, if you've been around people that are not as mock bid as far as obeying all the rules, you stand a chance of, you know, of potentially getting COVID. And then, you know, it's a domino effect as far as transmitting it to family members and friends. And it's, you know, it really is a domino effect. So traveling is safe as long as you protect yourself. And like Rabbi Bauman said earlier, large gatherings are probably the highest exposure rate, especially if they're not adhering to the guidelines. And there are many people out there that do not believe that COVID really is as contagious or as dangerous as, as it really is. I think you just have to read the headlines and I'm, I'm not one to believe everything I read, but there's so much information and most people know of someone that has had a bad outcome or still suffering from COVID to really take to heart that it can't affect anyone. And even if you don't have risk factors, it can affect you. The, the high-risk groups, certainly you want to, everyone has bobbies and zadies and relatives that have high risk or in a high-risk situation. Certainly you want to protect them from catching COVID. You know, it's just a sensitivity and a consideration not only for family members and the community at large, but we're trying to protect the school. We're trying to keep our children in school and keep the doors open. And it's, it's, it's a Herculean task to do. It really is because there are a lot of people with different philosophies out there and we're all trying to come together and really protect each other. And to do that, we really need cooperation from everyone. Yes.
I'm sorry, could you, could you address the issue of antibodies? A lot of people seem
Right. So I saw some of the questions related to the testing. The reverse transcriptase are PCR, just the PCR is the most sensitive and the most accurate test. All the antigen testings test for the virus also, but it has a lower sensitivity, meaning there can be more false positives. So we can't really risk having false positives because we would have people in school that tested negative but actually have the COVID disease. The antibody testing, so antibody testing is interesting because antibodies are the body's defense when you are presented with a antigen or a virus or a bacteria. And it's a body's defense of these invading viruses. So not everybody has an antibody response. Some people have a high, and antibodies can be quantitative or qualitative. Qualitative means you just have antibodies. You don't know how, what the level of antibodies are. And the quantitative will detect what the antibody level is. The problem with antibody testing is nobody knows really what the level of antibodies that you need to have in order to confer immunity, meaning nobody knows if you have enough antibodies to make sure that you are safe from getting COVID again. So there are, there are at least eight different strains which have resulted in mutations of the original virus. And there are cases worldwide of people getting reinfected with different strains. Most, I would think all of them that I've read about certainly have not had worse outcomes because the antibodies they've had from the original virus seem to be protective. But again, antibody testing doesn't tell you if you have the virus currently. The only test that really, it tests is, the antibody test will give you the information that you've had the virus in the past. So having the virus in the past is nice to know you had it. It does not mean you can't get it again. You know, there's so many, like I've said over and over, there are many unknowns. One of the unknowns is, can you get it again? And if you get it again, are you contagious? So with those unknowns, antibody testing doesn't really help you. It might make you feel more comfortable that you've had it and that you may have protection, but it's not a guarantee that you do have protection. I'll, I'll pause for a second to look at the questions just to see if there's anything I can answer. One question is, is there amount of time in order to get the PCR test? So I've already answered that. No, as soon as you're symptomatic, you should be able to get a test and it should be accurate. As long as the test is done in accurately. If you keep a child home and monitor them because they're not feeling well but not exhibiting COVID symptoms, are they allowed to come back after a day if they seem to be fine? Yeah. So the question is, if a child's not feeling well, but they're not exhibiting any COVID symptoms, but you keep them home like recommended for 24 hours and it doesn't amount to, it doesn't evolve into any symptoms, he doesn't have any symptoms, then the child can come back to school if he's feeling well. Again, children, I have, thank God I have five children. They're not young anymore, but children cannot feel well for many reasons. So you just want to make sure, you know, a lot of children will not feel well because they're starting to get sick. So after a day, if they're still home and having symptoms, then you keep them home. If they feel better the next day without any symptoms, then you can send them. If you test positive and you were with the family 24 to 48 hours before, does that family need to quarantine as well? So that question is a good question. Most people hold that you're probably contagious two days before you are symptomatic. I would say depending on the situation, if that person that tested positive was asymptomatic, I would say those people can just be monitored, wearing a mask and keeping safe distance from other people. If they were symptomatic, I would be more careful. I would still say they should be, they should monitor with masks and I don't think they really have to quarantine depending on the situation. Again, I may sound vague at times, but each situation does deserve investigation and there are different approaches depending on the situation. Where do families need to go to get tested? Also, young children. Joe DiMaggio, I had sent an email I had received from Joe DiMaggio, Children's Hospital in Hollywood. They tested in the ER. I know there may be I know there may be a cost because the child has to be seen in the ER, but they have two urgent centers that do test. I believe you don't need an appointment. And I believe it's billed to your insurance. I'm not 100% sure, but we could get that information out to people. Again, any place that tests for PCR, I would think the other children's hospitals probably also, Miami Children's probably does. They probably have urgent care centers that do. I don't know that offhand. Any limitations for families who have children coming from Sukkot from areas that don't practice social distancing? Again, there's a level of trust that we have to have in all all of the people that are are involved with the school, parents, staff, teachers, administrators, children. We have to trust that they're practicing all the safety precautions. And if certainly, like Rabbi Bauman had elucidated earlier, if coming from Sukkot, if you don't feel well or if you've been around people that are symptomatic or certainly people that have tested positive in the last 14 days, you should really quarantine, you know, just as if you were, you know, in in Florida and you were, you know, experiencing the same situation. So there is a a level of trust. And we have to try to be honest with ourselves because not being honest can affect a lot of people in school and in the community. So I think, you know, that speaks for itself. Can you please review which symptoms are considered possible COVID symptoms? Fever, sore throat, cough, fatigue, muscle ache, body aches, loss of new loss of taste or smell? I think that's it, fatigue. What about encouraging people, especially teachers, to up their intake of zinc and quercetin as supplements? Yeah, so there's a lot of information on a lot of different medications and home remedies. I'm not at liberty to really recommend any of them because there really aren't enough good studies on any of the medications and supplements to really make a definitive recommendation. So I can't really say that. I think if it's a harmless remedy or home remedy, certainly can't hurt to take it. I would not, I would not be asking your doctor for medications that may or may not help the situation. Again, there's not enough information out there and enough well-designed studies to really test these recommendations that are being made by different people. If there is a place that does keep six feet distance, but people are allowed to take off the mask, how does this work? Is one safe? There's levels of safety. Certainly, if you're at a greater distance than six feet, that's that's good. It's better to wear a mask. Again, masks do protect other people from you. So if you're asymptomatic and have COVID, you are being you are being considerate and protecting other people from you. Again, it's helpful to keep a safe distance. Again, some people say six to 10 feet. At one point, they were saying 12 feet. Again, you know, if you can wear a mask and you don't have any, you know, medical reasons not to wear a mask, I would wear a mask and keep six feet if you can. So this is a common question. If a child tests positive strep, do they still need a COVID test? I saw, actually, I have a patient in my office today. I don't, they don't, I don't think they go to Tora Semes, Tora Semim. I'm not sure if they're even Jewish. But this child came in and was at Joe DiMaggio. And he's a four year old with fever. And he didn't have a sore throat, but he threw up as they were getting ready to leave after they gave him Motrin. He threw up and they tested him for strep. And he didn't have a red throat. He didn't have a sore throat. He wasn't complaining, but he tested positive for strep. So they started treating him. But when I when I asked, you know, when I was interviewing my patient, it it just dawned on me that the child did not have strep. He was probably colonized with strep. There are people out of 100 people, 10 to 15% of those people, 10 out of 100, 15 out of 100, will test positive for strep without any having any symptoms. And they're just colonized because strep lives in some people's throat and doesn't cause infection. So he must have been one of those. And for all I know, he has COVID. I recommended him get tested for COVID. So that's one scenario. But also, there, nobody knows if you can have COVID and strep at the same time. I haven't read anything about it. There are there are statements that say that you look for other illnesses when you have COVID type symptoms. And if you could rule those out, if you could rule those other types of illnesses in that you don't have to worry about COVID, I would still test for COVID. And it's it's not my own, just a conservative approach. I mean, that is an approach that a lot of people take just because of all the unknowns that are out there. I guess I wouldn't want to be responsible for attributing my symptoms to something else and having COVID and then, you know, transmitting it to other people. We went to Joe DiMaggio ER to get testing tonight. They were wondering why so many people were coming to them. Are there any alternatives that can get results back that quickly? There are urgent care centers that Joe DiMaggio has. I'll I'll try to investigate if Miami Children's has urgent centers that are doing it. I know they have urgent centers. I just don't know if they're testing. It's unfortunate. That's one of the weaknesses in this whole COVID situation is this accessibility to accurate and rapid testing. There's no good answer to that. And, you know, we keep our ears to the wall and try to find places that we can get rapid results so we can, you know, have fast turnaround and fast decision making. What about recirculated air in the airplane? No, airplane, there's the air is, they say it's like in a surgery suite. It's ultra filtered and it's not an issue on an airplane. A student tests positive in a class, does the school inform the class parents or grade or other families on the bus or other families on the bus? I can answer, Rabbi Bauman can answer. Certainly, if a student tests positive, I believe that the people that need to know are informed. And that stretches all the way out to possible contacts on in transportation and other areas, I'm assuming.
Yes. There's a question about play dates.
Yeah, can the children have play dates? So I'm asked that question all the time. And the answer, the answer I give is, if you trust the people that your kids are playing with are really adhering to the guidelines and the children or anyone in the family has not been symptomatic or had tested positive in the last 14 days, I think it's OK to have play dates. And in socialization, you know, one reason we go back to school is for the socialization of our children. And outside of school, it's the same thing. You just have to try to be safe. Certainly, if they're old enough to wear masks and, you know, they're not playing basketball or, you know, outside running around, I would encourage them to wear masks. You know, that's that's the mantra mantra that we're suggesting. When, you know, whenever you can, you wear masks. And it's a good example for the children, for parents to wear masks in those situations. For your information, UM is doing mobile COVID testing. OK, I mean, if anyone that has information related to where PCR testing is available, certainly you can send that information to Rabbi Bauman or the COVID coordinator, and they can distribute that information. The RT-PCR, which is RT stands for reverse transcriptase, PCR is the same as the PCR test. Where do families need to go get tested? Also, young children. OK, we've answered that. What about seasonal allergies? Just in general, children that have allergies, children that have that suffer from headaches, migraines. Again, we recommend you, you keep the child at home for at least one day to make sure that your child really does have allergies and it's nothing else. I think most parents do know what their kid's allergy symptoms are. We are trusting the parents to make that decision. Same with headaches. Headaches are a little bit different because headaches are fairly common in all age groups. And it could be caused by many different factors. It is on the list of COVID symptoms. So keep your child home for at least a day. And if the headache seems to go away and there's nobody else that has symptoms in the family or no one's been around anybody with symptoms, then you're welcome to send the child back. But if the child continues to have a bad headache, that doesn't seem like their usual headache or they develop other symptoms, then you keep the child home. There have been a few cases that kids have been absent from school for an illness and we are, the parents are not aware of anything unless Haas has only reached a positive COVID test. Why aren't? Can can you answer that, Rabbi Bauman? That there have been few cases that kids have been absent from school for an illness and we, the parents, are not aware of anything unless Haas has shown they received a positive COVID test. Why aren't parents in such a class sent a memo saying a boy was sick in the class and they await results? In that way, we, the class parents, will know to be extra careful. And until results arrive, we'll take extra precautions with our kids that are in that class.
So I'm assuming that we we have a level of precaution as a general rule. And I don't know that additional precautions can be taken short of asking the children to stay home.
Right, some of these cases are probably also children that are sick that have not been reported to school. I mean, there's a lot of different scenarios, you know, out there, so.
OK, I would encourage anybody that has continued questions, send it into our to our website and or safety@YTCT.org. Thank everybody for listening. Thank you, Dr. Bennett, for this very incisive and thorough treatment of all the aspects of COVID. I hope that we can all enjoy ex siv ha'chaimatova and everybody stay healthy, please adhere to the guidelines. And we should all have a gezont New Year. Thank you. Good night.